Please bow your heads. Almighty God.
We give thanks for an glorious day in Tallahassee and for all of your blessings. We pray for those amongst us who are hurt and who are hungry, and we ask for your forgiveness and your grace. And as we come together this day, we pray for the strength, the guidance, and the wisdom as we conduct the business of our great city, the city of Tallahassee. In your name we pray, amen. Who's joining in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, we've got a great City Commission meeting, we've got some public comment which we all look forward to, and we will go ahead and get started. First and foremost, Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications for the meeting today?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any modifications.
Excellent, okay, do we have any presentations coming for the City Commission?
No, sir, no presentations.
Do we have any announcements for the City Commission?
No, sir, no announcements for this meeting.
Before we get to citizen input, because I don't think we have any listed, do we have any appearances by appointed boards and committees and other governments before the City Commission?
No, sir, no appearances.
Excellent, we are now on citizen input on agenda items. First of all, we thank everybody for joining us, certainly do appreciate it. We're going to make sure that everybody has plenty of opportunity to speak. Uh, let's go ahead and take all public comment on agenda items now, so that everybody has the opportunity to be heard and we maximize their time. Jim, if for some reason you do call someone's name and they have not had the chance to join us, of course, we will give them the opportunity to speak when the agenda item comes up as well. I do realize that some people have signed up for several agenda items. I think we should give them their time, just as if they were going to speak on every agenda item in chambers individually. So let's move forward with the process. With that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Cook to run the public hearing. Let me remind those that are joining us, as I say in all meetings, let's set the example on civic discourse, civil discourse, and the civic manner and show the world how Tallahassee does it and that we do it right. With that, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start by reminding U.S. Commissioners and any of the public who are watching that we did receive a written comment as well as registration for people who wanted to speak to this meeting. We received thirteen written comments by our cutoff nine o'clock last night. One of those on item 9.07, which is approval of a subdivision plant, that item was supporting some of the ideas from Keep It Rural. We did have one written comment on item 1301, asking to use that audit to provide protection for peaceful protesters and prevent officer violations of the ideas from Keep It Rural. One comment on item thirteen, one written comment on item thirteen, which is in support of options one and two, which I believe are staff recommendations, or at least among staff's recommendations, recommended options for you. And then we received a number of written comments on un-agenda items. I'll refer to those when we get to the un-agenda portion of the meeting.
Yeah, Jim, I was gonna, I was, I failed to mention, and I apologize, this portion of the meeting is for agenda items. Obviously, we have time at the end of general business for un-agenda items as well. So if you have signed up for un-agenda items, that will be at the end of the meeting. Right now, it's for agenda. All right, Mr. Cook, proceed.
Very good. With that, we will begin hearing comments from our speakers. I do believe with one possible exception, we, we think everyone has connected to the meeting, so we should be able to move pretty efficiently. I'll remind speakers, or let them know if they've not participated before, that as the mayor indicated, when we, just as when we meet in chambers, I'll call your name, if you'll provide your name and address for the record, then I will begin to give you three minutes for your remarks. I'll give you a heads up a little bit before the three-minute mark to allow you time to, to wrap up. As the mayor indicated, there are a couple who've signed up on multiple items, but I will call them effectively in the order of the items. So if someone signed up for two items, I'll call their name at the time of the first item for which they signed up and let them speak their piece on, on whatever they signed up for. So the first speaker we have is John Reimert, requested to speak on actually five items, uh, 9.11, which is a consent item approval of minutes, 11.02, which is an appointment to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and then to three of the policy items, 1301 being an audit of the use of force policy for TPD, 1304 is the contract for the design of the South City Transit Station, and 1305, Star Metro Operating Analysis. But that gives you the nature of the items signed up for, but our speaker is John Reimert, and you may begin when you are ready, sir.
Thank you, I'm actually going to yield my time on the 9.11, only because I believe that was actually an accident that I selected that one, so I apologize for that. But thank you very much.
Okay, well, if you would like to, um, go ahead and give your name and address, you may begin your remarks on those, on those other items, because what we're going to do is take all.
My apologies, I thought you were going to go item by item as we are moving through the, uh, through the stuff. Okay, uh, yeah, my name is John Reimert, address 176 Park Brook Circle, Tallahassee, Florida. So on 11.2, the appointment of Mayor Daley to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, it seems the decision has already been made on this. Option one to approve Mayor Daley's appointment effective October 1st, 2020 is only, is the only recommended action. And I'm not sure if this is meant to be some sort of a retroactive power given to Mayor Daley in the event that this was approved, but I feel like this should have, you know, been voted on prior to, um, you know, the, the, it, it should have been voted on by the public prior to October 1st, if that was going to be the time that he was, you know, given authority to make decisions on. But that said, since it seems the decision's already been kind of made to appoint Mayor Daley to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, I will sincerely wish him luck and hope he helps to bring true affordable housing to Tallahassee and not just, you know, more overpriced student housing. And as far as that, I yield the remainder of my time on that issue. Now is for, I think, I believe the next policy issue that I spoke on or signed up to speak on would be 1301.
That's correct.
Audit of TPD use of force policy. Um, I would again kind of reiterate the written, the, the written comment on this one as far as using that audit to help, um, you know, protect peaceful protesters. We've obviously all, all seen what has happened and transpired in Tallahassee over the past several months. I would say without a doubt, um, the majority of these protests have been peaceful and, um, you know, and I, I don't, I don't think that there's any reason why September 5th should have happened. I, I, I think there, I, you know, we've all heard this again and again, we, a lot of us have echoed this comment, but I think it was an egregious use of force. Um, and I think that as far as moving forward, the very least Tallahassee can do is to, you know, put forth a legitimate audit of Tallahassee's use of force, that TPD's use of force, and try and at least fix that, because we, we need to be able to peacefully protest in Tallahassee. We need to be able to voice our opinions and we need to be able to, um, you know, protest. That's, that's our right. And I don't think we should be met with riot shields and, you know, you know, heavy, heavy equipment. I don't think it's necessary. And, you know, I, I think we can all agree on that. I don't, I don't think for somebody voicing their opinion, there should be, you know, a, a, a reason to have riot gear, you know, walls of riot gear officers deployed, or drones, or helicopters, or anything like that. So, you know, I, I don't want to blabber on about that for the next several minutes, but I do think that we need to take a look at the tally nineteen, and we need to drop the charges. I think that it was unnecessary to have arrest fourteen of them that day and then continue to track them down and, and arrest them days after the fact. You know, that being said, um, I, um, I'm going to move on to my, my next topic. And as far as the contract for 13.4, contract for the design of South City Transit Center, now, I'm not entirely sure, because, um, to be quite honest with you, I work just like the rest of us, and one, one issue that I have is these meetings start in the middle of the day, and it's very difficult to be able to, you know, research all of these topics in such a short amount of time. And, and it's kind of disappointing at times, because I, I do want to be an informed citizen and I want to, um, and, and obviously that falls on me to make more time to, you know, research all of these topics, but it seems like these are very important decisions and I, and I want to help out as much as possible. So as far as the contract, I'm assuming that this, um, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the, the design of the South City Transit Center, I would assume is some sort of hub in the, in the south side? Is that what's, what's going to happen?
There will be, yes, in general, but there will be a, a full presentation by, by staff on that item, so I think you'll probably get, get clarification on, on that as, as that's presented.
And I suppose if, if, I did sign up for un-agenda items, so I suppose if something comes up in the presentation that, um, you know, maybe I agree with or disagree with, I'll be happy to share my, uh, my input on that towards the end, if that's all right. Now, and, and same thing, I guess, I suppose for 13.05 as well, and that's the next one that I signed up for. So I assume that those are, those are interrelated, and I, I'll go ahead and save those comments with my, my time at the end for un-agenda items, and I'll address it at the, at the end, if that's all right with you.
Okay, very good, uh, thank you. And yes, what we, what you should, should see in the course of the meeting is items in the consent section, which are nine point, um, and followed by a number, will be items that are on consent, those will be voted on together as a group by the commission. Items beginning with eleven are introductions of ordinance, and so those items will be introduced at this meeting for a public hearing to be held at a later date. And then any of the items that have, um, that are policy formation type items have thirteen point something as a number, those will each be individually addressed during the course of the meeting, and then obviously, at the conclusion of all of those items, we'll have an opportunity for un-agenda input. And I do have you down for that portion of the meeting as well.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your, your, your explanation on that, and I look forward to hearing the rest of the, uh, meeting, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next speaker is John Evans, speaking on item 1301, which is the proposed audit of the TPD use of force policy. He'll be followed by Chelsea Reimer, also on item 13.01. Mr. Evans.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to echo the last speaker. And I would like the City Commission to look into the tally nineteen. I don't believe that, um, I don't believe that people's right to protest should be infringed. It is our right to make our voices heard, and if, um, force is used to silence us, that removes our country and our community away from a democracy. I would like Jack Campbell to immediately drop all charges against tally nineteen and the police to be audited on this matter.
Thank you. If you would, give your name and address for the record so that we can, can retain that as well.
Yes, sir, my name is John Evans. My address is 106 West 7th Avenue, apartment 13, here in Tallahassee.
Thank you. The next speaker is, is Chelsea Reimer, followed by Delatory Hollinger.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you give your name and address, you can begin at your convenience.
Okay, my name is Chelsea Reimer, I live at 176 Park Brook Circle. I'm speaking at this time on 1301, which is the audit of TPD's use of force policy. And I definitely think this needs further audit, as we've clearly seen in the past events, that the use of force has been excessive, to say the least, and not really abiding by TPD's use of force current policy. Also, I would call on all Commissioners to condemn law enforcement's actions during those days, as this was more than just TPD, but a joint force of over five different law enforcement officers, and have all charges dropped against the tally nineteen, including the one outstanding warrant. I also would like Commissioners to condemn DeSantis's proposed legislation, which is clearly anti-protester and infringing on people's First Amendment rights. And I would encourage the City Commission to repeal or amend the City of Tallahassee ordinance that already criminalizes working-class people for assembling without a permit. Now, this is something that is not fairly and, um, equally enforced and is clearly targeted against certain groups. I would also like to state that, and remind Commissioners that according to your organization chart, the citizens of Tallahassee are above the Commissioners, and that you are supposed to. And it's been very disappointing to see that not being done. And I will yield the rest of my time until un-agenda items, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Delatory Hollinger, speaking on item 13.03, which is the review of the lease with the Capital City Country Club and the presence of, um, anomalies or grave sites on the golf course property. I believe I saw Mr. Hollinger.
Hello.
Hello there, I can hear you, go right ahead.
All right, thank you, Delatory Hollinger, 501 Alpha Avenue. I'd like to thank the Commission and staff for bringing this item, uh, to you on, on today. I do agree with the option number one, as well as option number two, which would be to form a committee to make recommendations to the Commission. I think that, um, that, that is a appropriate way to go. But also, option two, um, which would be, I believe, to eminent domain of the, the grave site for the purpose of historic preservation. And, um, I did submit those comments previously, and so thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome, and those written comments were received. I'll, I'll use this as an opportunity to point out also that any written comments received in, uh, by Tuesday night were compiled and distributed to each of the, uh, members of the City Commission and also published to board docs along with the agenda, so that the public can see those as well. We did receive a few written comments during the course of the day, which we weren't able to process in time to include with the other items, but they, those additional items will be made part of the public, uh, public record of this meeting. Our next speaker is Margaret Moore, followed by Mary Ann Grantham, the Archangels. So Margaret Moore on item 1301.
Hold on. Hi.
Thank, there we go, I do hear you, yeah.
Hi, how are you? I'm Margaret Moore, uh, my address is 1910 Monticello Drive. Good job. I just wanted to talk about, um, there was a particular line in the proposed audit. The additional sources of best practices may be identified during the audit and incorporated as a result. So I was just wondering, you know, whose best practices, those were going to be, you know, are they going to be evidence-based? There are local experts available on this. Did like, they all go out, it looks like to me.
We're still able to hear you?
It, from my perspective, it looks like there's no one in the meeting all of a sudden.
This is.
Okay.
Jim Cook, Treasurer Clerk, who called you to speak. I can see and hear you without any change from, from when you first signed on. I'm seeing a couple of other heads nod in that regard, so I believe people are able to hear your comments, so you can proceed, even if you can't see us.
Okay, um, so, and I wanted to ask, you know, how those were going to be identified, how those best practices would be identified. I'd like to see the Commissioners direct the City Auditor to incorporate, you know, some public input, have a hearing, have two hearings, who knows? Because during the audit, you know, I don't know how lo, how long are we getting for the audit? And also, you know, um, like, when's it due by? So how much time do we have to, you know, pull together as much information as possible? Because I haven't been feeling really good about, you know, and incorporated as a result. You know, I, I would like to see more evidence from the City Commission, please, to incorporate public input, because I hear you hearing it, but I don't ever see it and incorporated. And so we have an opportunity here, um, you know, I'd like to approve, I'd like to approve the City Auditor creating a, um, creating this and to meet with the public. I'd like to see independent reviews in addition. I'd like to see the inclusion of local experts. And I would also just like to, uh, point out that, you know, this is really an opportunity for us to ask, how, how hard do we want our police to beat us when they don't approve of what we're doing? I would like to have a hand in saying what feels appropriate about that, and I would like to see the City Commission approve or incorporate and incorporate some public comment. So, thank you, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Grantham, the Archangels, also speaking on item 1301, followed by Max, and I believe it's Max Epstein. May not, yes, I do see Mary Ann, uh, the Archangels, there you go, and you are unmuted, so if you'll begin speaking, I'll let you know that we can hear you.
Yes.
Yes, there you are. If you give your name and address, you can begin.
Of course.
Great, we can, we can hear you fine, can see you're unmuted. And again, if you give your name and address, you can start, and I'll let you know when your three minutes have been reached. I think we will need to come back there, um, and I'll move to Max Epstein, who will be. There we go.
Hello.
Yes, you are loud and clear. Name and address.
Thank you. This is Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. I have a few topics to talk about, um, and I may not be able to stick around to the very end, so I'm going to slip in a little bit more, so bear with me. I first of all, support everything Delatory says. This is a really important preservation. I support using the eminent domain to preserve our important natural and historic resources. If anything more is to be done with that property, it's one of the biggest pieces of, of actual unbroken land, like Walani left, and it should be preserved, at least a large portion of it. As far as the police goes, I'm glad to see that the curfew hasn't come back, because that was very troubling. It allowed the police to, I think, use facial recognition and record your license plates, which seems to be what the person who pulled the firearm at that protest was doing. And if the governor's laws go through, well, then, um, you can be charged under the RICO laws for being in a group of seven or more when we have eighteen thousand people at the stadium without masks and grouping together. I had a great meeting with the stormwater team today, both city, county, and blueprint. Our group would like to see a master plan between all three of these agencies to work together. It was very constructive. I'd like to urge you to come up with a master stormwater plan before you approve Walani, because just like.
Mr. Epstein, Mr. Epstein, you need to come in. We are talking just on the agenda items. We have time at the end of the meeting for un-agenda. So I'm going to ask you to come back at the end of the meeting for un-agenda to speak about the master plan and Walani, if you don't mind. We are just on the agenda items right now.
And I just didn't know if I was going to be able to be there later, so that's fine. Let me see if there's anything else I signed up to speak about, because, uh.
We specifically signed up for the, as you said, the 1301, which is the audit of TPD's use of force and the Capital City Country Club lease and unmarked graves. Those were the, the two that I had, just as a reminder.
Thank you. Just to wrap up, then, I would say we need to very seriously look at our police this review audit and see what is equitable here, because all you got to do is read Jan DeCosmo's post about a very, very similar thing that happened in the 1960s here, during the Civil Rights Movement. The same exact thing happened, people being arrested, dragged to jail, peaceful protesters. And these are people that should not be in jail. And, you know, we needed a police presence there, that's important, but not the way it was handled. And when you have the police that are requesting facial recognition and, you know, looking at license plates, when we have issues with the police and turning their body cams on in controversial officer-involved shootings, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Our next speaker is Anthony Suarez, and then we'll try again, Mary Ann, uh, the Archangels. See Anthony Suarez unmuted, so if you'll give your name and address, you can begin. Holding just for a moment for Mr. Suarez. And it appears that Mary Ann Archangels has, has, no, is still here. Um, if, if she is here and would like to begin, she can unmute her mic and begin remarks. Okay, um, not hearing from Anthony Suarez or Mary Ann the Archangels. Mayor, I believe that concludes those who signed up to speak on agenda items. We do have probably an equal number of individuals signed up to speak at the un-agenda, um, portion of our meeting.
Can you hear me now? I, I was having an issue before.
Yes, I can. Please.
Yes, uh, thank you. So, uh, my name is Anthony Suarez, um, I live at 2566 West Tennessee Street. And I do want to say I am in support of, uh, the TPD's use of force policy being audited. And I, I am, I do call on the City Commission to, um, to lend their voices to the effort, um, within the Tallahassee community to have, um, all of the charges against the tally nineteen dropped, the protesters who were arrested on September 5th and in the, in the week following. As our elected officials, you are supposed to carry out what is in the best interest of the people of Tallahassee. It is clearly not in our best interest for the protests of police crimes to be met with militarized police violence. Those who speak out against police brutality and who demand community, community control of the police should not be faced with the possibility of years in prison and hefty fines. Tallahassee Police and State Attorney Jack Campbell are terrorizing and repressing the tally nineteen for speaking out. So I urge you to join us in demanding that State Attorney Jack Campbell immediately drop all charges against the tally nineteen. The City Commission has an opportunity here to stand with the people of Tallahassee, stand up, um, for people who are being, who are being repressed, um, by Tallahassee Police for speaking out, as I said, against police violence and for demanding, uh, community control of the police. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, that concludes the speakers for this portion of our meeting.
Excellent. We're now on the consent agenda. Mr. Manager, have any?
Mr. Manager, have any items been pulled off the consent agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, no items have been pulled.
Excellent. Yeah, Pro Tim properly moves the consent agenda, segmented by Dr. Bryant. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We are on number eleven point oh one. Hmm, oh, and we have, uh, Darby Kerrigan Scott, who has joined us as well. I'm going to allow city manager to, to introduce the item before turning it over, uh, to Ms. Kerrigan Scott for a presentation. Darby, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Um, just to briefly set the stage for this, this item is, is, uh, the acceptance of the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. It's the annual report. Ms. Scott is here to share that report with you, and then, uh, recommends your approval of options one through six, which is, uh, the acceptance of the report is option one, the approval of the agreement for staffing, uh, is option two, of the approval of the reappointment of Ms. Judy Mandrell, uh, by Commissioner Richardson is option three, the approval of the appointment of Tristana Alexander by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox is option four, and the approval of the appointment of Jasmine Simmons by the full state commission is option five, and finally, option six is the approval of the appointment of Adella Gdemi, uh, which has been recommended by the mayor. So, uh, at the conclusion of the report, Mr. Mayor, we ask that you approve those options as well. All right, at this point, I'll, I'll pass it to, uh, Ms. Scott for the presentation of the report.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor Daley, and commissioners. I am going to open up my presentation. Can everybody see that okay? Okay, good. Um, so thank you for allowing me to present the report. Again, my name is Darby Kerrigan Scott. I have served as the chair of the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls over the past year, and I'm happy to be here to present our annual report, uh, which you have already received a copy of, um, but I just want to highlight a few things for you, and then I'd be happy to take any questions you may have about it. We selected, um, as our theme for this year, the effects of trauma on the mental health of women and girls becoming a, a more trauma-informed community. Um, of course, that was selected back in October, and, um, with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, the topic of trauma is more apparent than ever. And we know, of course, it manifests in our community in individual capacities as well as collectively throughout the community. Uh, we believe trauma needs to be analyzed and understood in the context of intersectionality as it is exacerbated by various factors such as economic inequality, racial injustice, and many others. So I'm going to take the opportunity to highlight each of the committees and the recommendations that they have prepared for you. First is the Education and Economic Security Committee. This committee began the year with the Women's Economic Security Summit back in October, which was an event two years in the making. We had a hundred and thirty-five members of the community attend that event, and we welcomed keynote speaker Phil Duvall, who was a co-author of the book Bridges to Sustainable Communities. He led us through an important community discussion on developing a common language to address poverty and common key performance indicators, um, to move the needle on poverty and create a sustainable community. Mayor Daley, um, again, I want to thank you for attending that summit, for voicing your strong support of this important issue. And the committee's recommendation is to implement a risk mitigation fund as a landlord incentive program for mixed-income housing developments in order to increase the accessibility of affordable housing to applicants who struggle with, with housing insecurity. And for those of you who may not be familiar with this concept, a risk mitigation fund is a resource that a landlord can access to minimize the potential financial impacts of renting to higher-risk tenants, and it comes very highly recommended by the Florida Housing Coalition. Protecting women and girls experiencing housing instability through this type of public side of partnership, we believe will translate to dollars saved down the line in preventing homelessness in our community. Next, I want to mention the Health and Development Committee, which held a webinar panel discussion just last month on the book The Deepest Well by Dr. Nadine Burke Harris. She is the Surgeon General of the State of California and the nation's foremost expert on childhood trauma. I highly recommend the book if you haven't read it and you're not familiar with adverse childhood experiences. It's a very easy read and very informative. We had about thirty-five people attend this webinar and, um, educated the community about this important topic. The committee's recommendation is to make provisions for the enhancement of formalized mental health and emotional wellness education programs for city and county employees and for community awareness events, with the first priority being employees who are in direct service positions, as well as recommending them for community agencies. Again, we believe investing in this type of training on the front end will result in more timely intervention, saving human lives and dollars over the long term. The final committee I want to highlight for you is our Violence and Safety Committee. Um, this committee held a screening of the film Resilience, The Biology of Stress and the Science of Hope, another film about adverse childhood experiences. We had forty-five people attend the screening, and they learned about adverse childhood experiences' long-term impact on health and life outcomes. This committee recommended to implement, is recommending to implement trauma-informed care for our local law enforcement agencies. And we believe this would have two distinct and important benefits. First, enable officers who are responding to incidents or engaging with the community to recognize the signs of trauma and work with service providers to respond appropriately. And we also believe it would have the benefit of helping law enforcement officers themselves address their own mental health needs stemming from the trauma they are exposed to in the line of duty. Again, we believe that investing in this type of training on the front end would save human lives and dollars on the back end by getting to the root of the issue, ensuring that members of the community are having their needs met and being provided with opportunities for healing, and keeping our law enforcement officers emotionally healthy, emotionally healthy, so they are, um, able to do their job to the best of their ability. This is trauma-informed care in law enforcement agencies is also a proven de-escalation tool that will, um, decrease incidence of excessive use of force and improve the relationship with local law enforcement in the community, particularly communities of color that are disproportionately impacted by excessive use of force. We believe this aligns very closely with what you were already doing on this issue, and we have been in contact, uh, with Officer Wyman at the Tallahassee Police Department, as well as Chief Revel about these issues, and we look forward to working with them on them as well. So with that, um, I will end my screen share. And I want to thank you all for your attention. Um, thank you for your support of the commission. I would be happy to address any questions you may have.
Ms. Kerrigan Scott, thank you so very much for all of the hard work that you do, and for the commission itself. I am very proud of the fact that I was actually a county commissioner when we voted to create the commission on the status of women and girls, and I've been a strong supporter ever since and will continue to do so. Colleagues, before we go into, uh, the motions to approve all of our appointments, which would be options one through six, let's open it up for any comments, um, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tim, yes ma'am.
I too want to, uh, pile on and say, great job. Um, I, I am always impressed with the product that comes from our commission on the status of women and girls. Very important, uh, committee, very important commission, and I appreciate the fact that we're always making sure that it is as diversified as possible, because it's great to have the conversation, but we gotta have, uh, members of the community at the table for the conversation. So I am very pleased and proud to, uh, have the opportunity to appoint someone, and I know some of the others that have been appointed. So I have no doubt that your, your work product and what you do in the community will continue to be stellar and will continue to hit, uh, all of the areas that we need addressed, and I'm just, uh, plum-pleased and proud to, uh, to be, to be a part and to know, uh, so many of you on this, on the, uh, commission. Don't hesitate to let me know if there's anything I can do to assist. I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, Pro Tim, is that one of them Gaston County colloquies?
You, you better know it. You better know it. Plum- proud and pleased.
Okay. Final comment from my colleagues.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, we got, so wait to see Commissioner Matt love.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Just a reminder to the commission that I do serve as the, and it is certainly my pleasure to serve as the liaison, uh, to the commission on the status of women and girls, and I am , uh, always impressed, uh, plum-pleased and proud. Of the work that this group does, and I'm, I'm very serious about it, because we know that there are issues in our community throughout our state and nation that impact women and girls that, that for so long have gone unaddressed. And I think it's important to note that, you know, because we have this organization and, and many others, uh, but certainly an advocacy group, uh, like this, uh, that has the ear of policymakers, you know, at the highest level of local government, uh, suggest our commitment to addressing those issues. And Darby, thank you all, and if you would extend that same thank you and appreciation, uh, to the officers and members of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and we look forward to continuing to work with you all to implement these recommendations. Uh, so we want you to hold us accountable for seeing that these get carried forward and, and be implemented in policy to improve the quality of life of women and girls in our community. So thank you all so much.
Commissioner Matt love.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and yeah, I can kind of with, uh, my previous two, um, colleagues, um, great work. We, you know, anytime citizens get engaged and help us become a better city, um, there's just so much, um, value there. I, I did want to ask, um, before making a motion, uh, of the three recommendations, um, that were made, Mr. City Manager, are these things that we can expect to take up throughout the year, or do we need to include that in a motion, um, to, to get a staff analysis of those three?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioners, thank you for that question. I think Ms. Scott indicated, um, going backwards that, um, that, um, the commission is engaged with the TPD. I'm glad to hear that, so I, I think that is well underway. Um, and I know that a presentation was also made to Leon, the Leon County Commission yesterday. I'm not sure the direction they took as it relates to the first recommendation, uh, regarding, um, um, a reserve fund. Um, Ms. Scott, I did not hear that. Certainly, we can work in collaboration at the staff, I think, perhaps for fiction.
Yes, I believe they have asked for staff direction, um, and further analysis of those, uh, those issues, so they seem to want more information and be interested in moving forward as well.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I think I can certainly work with my counterpart, the county administrator, uh, on that matter and bring you back information related to that. And then forgive me, what, uh, remind me the, the middle recommendation, Ms. Scott.
The mental health first aid training. That is something that the county has actually begun, had begun before the pandemic implementing. Uh, and so, yesterday at the commission meeting, Commissioner Dozier asked staff to get an analysis of, of where that was, as well as any other mental health training they are providing to county staff. Uh, so we, if you would be willing, uh, would, would recommend the same type of analysis in this case.
I think that certainly would be fitting, and, and we have, um, extensive training. I think that, uh, um, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, that will be worth exploring, and I could certainly, uh, follow up on that and provide information as well.
Excellent. Uh, Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant, any comments?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor, before I take the motion, but, uh, I, I too want to pile on, congratulations for, uh, the work that's being done. Uh, I do remember, uh, my first introduction to this group through the strategic planning process, uh, and Darby, I think that was before your time on the commission, but, uh, we see the results of that today, a- as, uh, you guys continue to implement the very things and, and goals that were set for even during that time. So again, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Williams Cox, I'll come back to you, Mayor Pro Tim, for motion.
Make sure I'm unmuted. Um, I offer the, I offer the motion that we accept the, uh, recommendations of the committee and that we, um, select options one through six.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, segmented by Commissioner Richardson now. Uh, that does include the recommendation for the mental health training as well. Mr. Dead?
Uh, yes, sir, it doesn't specifically in the agenda item, but I think that's, uh, that's clear in, in your direction.
Okay, colleagues, are we all clear on that? I want to make sure that, that we understand the motion on the table. Great. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Ms. Kerrigan Scott, thank you so much for joining us, we appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
You are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the city commission meeting, or if you need to log off, we understand as well. We're on item number eleven point oh two, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Treasury Clerk, would you like to introduce this one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to take that. Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, this is an appointment to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Let me make mention of a couple of items in the, from the agenda item itself, which I think will also answer a question, um, from one of our, uh, earlier speakers. Membership of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, uh, has to be between eight and eleven members, and those membership requirements were amended with the passage of a House bill just this year. Um, and that requirement now says that the membership must include, and I'll quote, "one locally elected official from each county or municipality participating in the shift program." So this is an item to appoint a member of our elected body to serve as the, the city's representative on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I think the comment or question from one of the speakers dealt with whether this was, uh, retroactive or something that was already done, and that's not the case. The dates in the agenda item are referring to when the state legislature took action and the city took some action to begin implementing that. So this is a new, uh, appointment. Uh, the mayor has volunteered to, to serve in that role, and with that, I will turn it to the city commission for action.
I appreciate it. It is not...
Mr. Mayor, I have a question as well. Um, one of the, one of the speakers asked about the opportunity to vote on this, and I wanted to make sure that the Treasury Clerk clearly explained that, uh, that this was not, uh, one of those items that, you know, there's a, a, a vote from the citizens on, uh, but that it's, it comes from, you explain it.
That, that's correct. The nature of this, um, board or committee, really like many of the other boards and committees we have, is the membership, um, is either appointed by the mayor, or in this case, and some of them, the ca- the mayor and the city commission. So what we have here is a seat that needs to be filled from the elected body. Um, the five of you, appoint one of your own to serve on this board, but it's not a matter that comes before the citizens in any fashion. You're following the prescribed, uh, direction of the, of the state of Florida on that.
Thank you for the clarification, and because of the fact that I have not participated in any meetings or any votes up until this point either, so I'm familiar with shift, I'm familiar with the Affordable Housing Program, and, uh, I was appointed about volunteering. Let me be very clear, if there is someone who has a dying passion to serve on this committee, I will be more than happy to step aside and allow one of my colleagues to serve in that capacity, speak now, and we will be more than happy to appoint you into this position. Uh, Dr. Bryant, comment?
I, I'd like to move staff recommendation, please.
It's been properly moved for staff recommendation by Commissioner Bryant, segmented by Commissioner Richardson. I'll give one more go at it before we take a step. If there is anyone else that would like to step up to the plate and serve in this capacity, uh, I will be more than happy to step aside. Seeing none, I will gladly serve on your behalf. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. I'll make you proud. We're on item number twelve point oh one, Madam Attorney. Madam Attorney?
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Madam Attorney.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Item number twelve point zero one, introduction of ordinance number twenty dash oh dash forty one, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section one seven one point zero four four Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. Uh, this item is a voluntary annexation of property known as English Plan Unit Development. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number twenty dash oh dash forty one and set the first and only public hearing for December ninth, twenty twenty, at six o'clock P M in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
All right, Madam Attorney, so the recommended action is option number one, which is the introduction of the ordinance and setting uh uh the hearing. Uh, comments or questions, colleagues? Is there a motion on the table?
Move option one, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson for the staff recommendation. Is there a second motion? It's been seconded by uh Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. Item number twelve point oh two, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve point zero two is introduction of ordinance number twenty dash Z dash twenty three, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee amending the Southwood Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This is an amendment to the existing Southwood P U D to change a point four seven acre portion of a parcel designated as golf course to one residential lot in the low density residential P U D land use component. An amendment to the Southwood Development of Regional Impact is necessary to obtain the proposed P U D amendment, which will appear on a future agenda. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number twenty dash Z dash twenty three and set the first and only public hearing for November tenth, twenty twenty, at six o'clock P M in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
All right, Madam Attorney, thank you very much for that introduction of ordinance. Very rarely do I do this, but I am going to weigh in on this and provide comment. I'm going to be careful with my comments because I know it's a quasi judicial hearing, and I know that at least I was contacted uh with the reformal request to remove this item off the agenda and have it not be heard. We need to remember that as a quasi judicial process, there are due rights that are involved, uh and the applicant has the right to have this introduced, heard, in a hearing to be set. However, after fourteen years of doing this, I can see this storm brewing and coming down the road, and I have been contacted by several hundred residents of the Southwood Development uh neighborhood in regards to this particular land use. On top of that, I'm always a little hesitant when it comes to what I refer to as spot zoning. Now, I have not had an opportunity to hear from the applicants or any type of formal presentation. I will note that, Madam Attorney, I will be filling out the form. I participated in a Zoom call with many of the residents of Southwood. Based on the information that I have in front of me today, recognizing I have not heard from the applicant, I am extremely hesitant to vote in favor of this, and I am just putting it out there because I foresee us, and we need to move forward, by the way, from a due process standpoint, I do support option number one because the applicant has a right. But I am strongly encouraging the applicant to withdraw their application, continue to work with the neighborhood and the residents to build consensus on this item and then bring it back to us uh at the beginning of twenty twenty one when we're not going to have a hearing, well, November tenth has already been postponed, correct? Madam Attorney, it would go to the December meeting?
Uh, we have, we have it currently set right now for a public hearing on the tenth, but at that meeting, to avoid having to re-advertise it uh as would be required, we're going to ask for a continuous to December ninth.
And that December ninth meeting will be chambers packed with residents on one side and the applicant on the other side, and and I would strongly encourage the applicant to continue working with the neighborhood to bring about resolution. Again, if this was before me today for a vote, based on the information I have, I would be extremely hesitant to provide my support for it. Those are my general comments. I'm interested to hearing from y'all as well, but I do think from a due process standpoint, it is in order for option number one to be approved and moved forward on behalf of the applicant that does have the right to have their application heard. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, let's open it up for a discussion. Any comment, your thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, uh or Madam Attorney, I too uh met with a few folks via Zoom, and I too will complete the form, uh but I I I wholeheartedly believe in due process. And I do believe that we have to um have due process in 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 this and let it go where it goes. But um to stop it today, I think that we would be doing a disservice to uh the process. And so um I will complete the form. I did meet with um, meet with the some citizens, and I too encourage them to uh talk to their neighbor uh their neighbors and and uh come to some res- resolve or some resolution, which is what I used to do as a planning commissioner when we had these kinds of discussions. Uh, encourage the uh applicant and the neighbors to get together. I understand there's a, there's a board um that um it sounds to me that there's more talking that needs to happen, and I don't think that we need to be the ones to uh to split the baby yet. I'm hoping that they will decide not to split the baby and and do what's best for the community and um and move forward. So I I too agree that we need to move forward in the name of due process um as well. Thank you.
And and you are absolutely correct, Mayor Pro Tim. There's also legal ramifications for not moving forward with the due process that we don't necessarily want to get ourselves involved in those aspects as well. Commissioner Matlow.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I've too have lots of conversations. This is obviously an issue of great um public uh importance uh that that we've been discussing. Um, can, uh, Madam Attorney, can we just get clarification on the timeline? I I think that's what's been giving um some people heartburn because people, um, you know, in different meetings have been told there'll be a continuation in November to go till till December. So as far as us introducing the ordinances now or introducing it later, where where in the timeline do the different pieces fall into place? Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. So uh this particular matter has two tracks it's traveling on. So you have the uh the rezoning that has to occur, and it has a certain process, which includes the introduction of an ordinance in a public hearing. And we also have the amendment of the Development of Regional Impact, which uh requires not only that we have a hearing in in uh in the city commission chambers, but also that the county commission uh deliberate on this as well. So right now, the current plan, of course, is to introduce it today and set the public hearing for uh November uh tenth. Uh, recognizing that we have, the planning commission has a meeting on November third where they will be considering the zoning issue. At the November tenth hearing, because we know that the county, which also has to hear the D R I matter, will not consider that matter until November seventeenth, we wouldn't want to consider the zoning matter before the D R I matter is considered. So on the November tenth, even though it is notice for public hearing, at that time, we will request the city commission to continue the zoning matter, which is what is before you today for introduction until December, December tenth, at which time there will be the consideration of the D R I amendment as well as the rezoning. So all of the substantive hearings will take place December tenth.
Perfect.
That, you mean December the ninth, correct? November the tenth and then December the ninth?
Yeah, December the ninth, I'm sorry. So December ninth, our December ninth meeting.
Okay, so we're all, our expectation would be the whole conversation will essentially take place on December ninth. We can handle both of these issues all at once on that day.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Richardson or Commissioner Bryant, and then I will come to the city manager for any final, any comments that you have as well. Commissioner Richardson, any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, it's just, and you know, I've been on this commission for six years now, and I've never heard debate carried on uh during the introduction of an ordinance. Uh, but be that as it may, I I think uh Commissioner Matlow is certainly correct. I mean, no final action will be taken until that December ninth meeting, and I think at that point, it would be appropriate uh for us to have comments and debate and take final action. What we're doing now, we are legally required to do, as has been said, has been uh clearly uh outlined by the attorney. Um, I I I too have spoken with the residents uh in Southwood. I, we've already completed the form, so we're we're legally, we've met the legal requirement in that respect, but I'm gonna wait until December ninth uh before I enter into any type of debate or signal my position uh on this issue.
Excellent.
Mayor.
Commissioner Bryant? No comment. Mr. Goode, any comment?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Mayor, I think this has been adequately covered, and I'm very glad it's clear that the the hearing, for all intents and purposes, will be on December ninth. There's some procedural stops along the way, but that's for the public's knowledge. December ninth is the date in which the city commission uh will ultimately discuss this issue.
So the appropriate motion for this evening would be the staff recommendation for option number one. Uh, is there, is there a motion and a second? Been probably moved by the mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. We're on policy formation and direction thirteen point oh one. Mr. Manager, excuse me, Mr. Sutton, the inspector general.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, as part of this September ninth meeting, you all requested that I bring back an agenda item to describe the scope and objectives of an audit related to TPD's use of force policy. This item brings back that scope and objective for the audit. Uh, as part of this audit, we will identify best practices related to law enforcement's use of force and then evaluate how well TPD's current use of force policy, which is General Order sixty, incorporates those best practices. While preparing this agenda item, I uh identified several sources of best practices, uh some of them including the U S Commission on Civil Rights, the Florida Police Chiefs Association, and the Police Use of Force Project. Uh, and and as part of this audit, we're going to continue to search for more sources of best practices, and I just want to assure all of you that we are going to cast a wide net looking for various sources that we can use to evaluate this policy. Uh, and so that that's the the item that was requested. In addition to that, though, as part of this agenda item, I'm proposing a second audit on uh TPD's training on their use of force policy. I think that's important because in the heat of a moment, an officer may not have the time to consider whether their actions are in accordance with the policy, and they're going to fall back on their training. So we want to evaluate whether TPD's training is adequate to give assurance that officers will act in accordance with the policy. Uh, so a- a- as a, as a conclusion, I want to say that this use of force policy will be a priority, and I anticipate starting immediately after its approval. But the audit on training may be a little bit delayed because I have other audits ongoing with my staff that I'd like them to be able to finish. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to you for any questions.
Mr. Sutton, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Manager, Madam Attorney, any comments as well to ba- to follow up with Mr. Sutton?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, we certainly look forward to um uh Mr. Sutton's review of the policy. I think we will find that it is uh the policies of TPD related to use of force are good and best in class for the most part. I'm especially looking forward to the review of the adequacy of training. I think uh uh having worked for the city for many, many years, I think we've been fortunate to have a very strong auditor's office to to look independently at actions like this and policies. And to the extent we find items that need improvement, we always work cooperatively to do that. So I'm looking forward to, on behalf of myself, on the deputy city man, on behalf of the deputy city manager in TPD, looking forward to uh working with Mr. Sutton on this.
Great. Madam Attorney?
Our mute button is very sensitive today.
I decided I'm just going to let someone else control it because I don't seem to be able to control the mute button. So I I would just only add that, uh, along with the city manager, when we have had lawsuits uh involving um uses of force, what we have found is that our uh practices have withstood constitutional scrutiny. So I I think that the auditor will find that as well.
Mr. Mayor?
You're muted, Mr. Mac.
Sorry, my left. Sorry. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you. Just a question for the uh for the auditor. Mr. Auditor, what is your timeline for completing at least the uh audit of the the uh use of force policy?
My plan is to have the audit completed by the end of the year, end of the calendar year. I I hope to have it as a resource for the citizen review board when it becomes work, when it begins its work, to be able to have something for them to look at. We do have a lengthy review process that can take in excess of a month, so it's it's going to compress the timeframe, but I believe we can get it done by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tim?
Because there were so many speakers on this, on this uh issue, I think it's very important to note that um an audit is independent, the auditor is not um in in cahoots with the, with the Tallahassee Police Department. Um, the audit is not in, not emotional. It's factual. Anyone who's ever sat with an audit, I I've done that with, as a state of Florida employee, it's sometimes painful um sitting with the auditor because you you may be doing things that may not be documented, and the auditor's job is to make sure what you're doing is documented. And so it's not going to be an emotional kind of a audit. It's going to be either we're adhering to policy or we're not. And if we're not, then there there will be um some findings that will uh let us know what it is that we need to do for any future audits to make sure that we're adhering to our policies and procedures. So um I I think that we we need to make sure that not only do we set the scope of what this audit is going to be, but also set the scope of uh public expectation for what the 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 results of the audit will be. It's going to be based on um policies and procedures and operations that are occurring right now. So uh just, just to say that because I've I've heard some of the comments that were made earlier about about the audit, and it 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 does not, the audit does not necessarily, but it uh uh I'm not describing it, but it doesn't necessarily go out and interview two hundred thousand citizens about the police to to complete their audit. If they decide that that's, that's something they want to do, they'll do a survey or whatever to do that. And I'm only speaking from experience and having sat through audits. So um just, just to kind of set the frame for what what's going to be happening, because I don't want people to come back and then be mad with the auditor because the auditor didn't do something that they thought that the auditor should have done. And uh we have a very capable auditing staff, inspector general, certified trained, bar none. Uh, they will do what needs to be done and let the chips fall where they may.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, further comments? We do not have a motion on the table. Is anyone that would like to move option number one, staff recommendation?
I'd move option one, Mr. Mayor.
Probably moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the mayor Pro Tim.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Option two is for the second audit.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I'm sorry. My mistake. You're correct. Staff recommendation is option number one and option number two.
I move options number one and two based on staff recommendations, Mayor.
That's our second.
Excellent. Any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. We are on item number thirteen point oh two, Mr. Sutton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This agenda item is a annual reoccurring agenda item that we bring back every year to get approval for our annual audit plan. This is required by City Commission Policy one oh four, the commission audit policy. We develop our plan based on a citywide risk assessment. We invite uh comment and input from city management, the city audit committee, as well as the city commission. The city's audit committee reviewed and approved this audit plan on September seventeenth. But that being said, I'd like to take a minute to point out two, two specific things. This plan does include the two audits that were just approved. This plan does include the two audits that were just approved by the city commission. In addition, I wanted to just remind you of something that I'm sure you all are aware of, that the audit of certain contracts remains on the audit plan. It has been postponed a couple times because of the, uh, trial of Mr. J.T. Burnett. And as soon as that audit is complete, or that trial is completed, the audit will move forward very quickly. And finally, I'd like to point out one change that we made in the way we present the audit plan. That, as I said a minute ago, the plan is developed based on a risk assessment. But this year, we have tied the individual audits back to the city's five-year strategic plan to highlight which parts of the plan our audits do impact or address. And so with that, I open it to any questions that you may have about the audit plan.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sutton. Certainly appreciate it. The staff recommended option is option number one. Let's open it up for any discussion. Mr. Mayor? Mayor Pro Tem?
Again, keeping in line with what I just said previously about the previous audit, this audit plan is just, uh, the work that is planned for the year for the audit, uh, uh, for the audit, audit of the general's office, the inspector general's office. And there is a, uh, citizen, um, committee, the audit committee that, that's, that consists of citizens who are, uh, recommended to this committee and have training and knowledge of how audits work. So that is the, uh, the, the cit- that would be the citizen input that will be provided to, uh, the auditors to, to do their work. But this is just planned for the year, what is, what they're planning to do. And so I just wanted to be clear that these are not areas that, that we anticipate that there are problems and they're, they're on this list because there are problems. They're on this list because it's time for them to be audited. You know, what doesn't get measured, doesn't get monitored, and we have to make sure that we're measuring and monitoring to make sure we're hitting on all cylinders. So I just wanted to make, make that clarification.
Thank you so much. Any other comments, motions? Seeing recommendations for option number one?
Move.
Accept.
One.
Second.
Commissioner Bryant moves, uh, option number one, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, five zero. We're on number thirteen point oh three, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number thirteen point zero, thirteen point zero three is a review of a lease with Capital City Country Club for the presence of anomalies on golf course property, the Capital City Country Club. Uh, by consensus of, and at the request of City Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, at the September ninth, twenty twenty, City Commission meeting, the commission directed that an agenda item be presented that considered the results of a two thousand nineteen ground penetrating radar, or G R, G P R, survey of a portion of Capital City Country Club golf course to ascertain whether unmarked graves were located thereon. This survey was conducted by the National Park Service. Thirty-seven grave-like anomalies have initially been identified. Per the report, twenty-three are highly likely unmarked graves and fourteen are possible unmarked graves. The city of Tallahassee has entered, had entered into a ninety-nine-year lease with the Capital City Country Club in nineteen fifty-six. In nineteen seventy-two, the city filed a lawsuit against the Capital City Country Club challenging the legality and validity of the lease. The circuit court entered a final judgment in favor of Capital City Country Club ruling specifically that the public lease dated February fourteenth, nineteen fifty-six, made between the city of Tallahassee and the Tallahassee Country Club for a golf course property was fully legal, legal and binding. There are several options to be considered by the city commission as contained in the, in the agenda item regarding possible action, uh, as a result of these anomalies. This includes, uh, the establishment of a staff and community representative committee to provide recommendations on some commemoration of the site, including extend, extending an invitation to representatives of the Capital City Country Club to participate. Uh, with the, with that being said, I'm available for questions, uh, and I present it to you for consideration.
Excellent. Thanks very much. I'm coming to the mayor pro tem. Thank you for bringing this item before us, for comments and, um, your thoughts on direction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Attorney and, uh, City Manager. We have been, um, huddling over this to try to figure out the best way to move forward for our community in this regard. And I've had conversation with, uh, some folks from the country club and I've also had some conversations with some local historians. Also had conversation with the archaeologists who has been involved. And, um, at this time, I think that with, with, with our current climate, as we're, uh, looking at our, our world in a different way, it's, it's time for us to bring this in for some closure. And my goal in this is that I want to be, um, I want con- concrete confirmation that we do have, um, graves there and that there are, you know, people in them. And, um, I want to be able to memorialize and show some respect and deference to where they are as opposed to where the rest of the golf course is. And I, I want to work with the country club, I want us to work with the country club as well as with community leaders, especially those from the historical, um, um, society or background, those who provide us with a lot of this history, to come together and let's come up with a reasonable and very, uh, respectful way of honoring and respecting these, uh, these, these graves. Uh, for those who, you who may not know the history, where the country club sits was once upon a time a plantation, but then so was a lot of Tallahassee, so, and others, and surrounding areas. So that's no surprise. But what we want to make sure of is that we do like others are doing in not only in other parts of Tallahassee, but also in the state and in the world. We wanna, uh, recognize that these graves are there and we want to memorialize and, and commit, and, and leave some type of remembrance so that those who come behind us will know that we did the right thing by these residents and made sure that they were properly recognized. And so I've had conversation with, like I said, the, the archaeologists. I've had conversation with, um, Jay Revel from the, uh, country club, his city manager and his city attorney. And, um, I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say, but I can tell you that I am ready to, uh, move. Um, Commissioner Billings was, was, um, two thousand and one, came back with a report and, uh, he, he, he unfortunately died some months later. And so now I think it's time for us to close this loop, close this gap and, and make this, make this project whole. And so I would, would want us to, uh, move forward with, uh, forming the committee of, uh, the country club, um, members who'd like to be a part, uh, historical folks from our community and other community members who have a, a interest in this, as well as the archaeologists, and, um, to make this happen. So I, I wanna, uh, give this to the city manager to make this happen. Uh, he, he understands, he has a grasp of what we're, what we're looking for. But we also want community input on how this should be done. And so the committee, I believe, forming that committee will help us provide that. We know that there'll be some money involved. So we're, we're not walking into this thinking this is gonna be free and easy, but it is well worth every cent to, to, to pay honor, uh, to these individuals who, who are resting there. We want them to continue to rest there and, uh, but we want those coming behind us to, to remember and know that. So I'm open to hearing what my colleagues have to say. That's the, that's how, uh, that's, those are my thoughts on it.
Is that your motion, Madam Pro Tem?
Yes.
I would second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
So that would be for option number one, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. I'm in support of it. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for all the work that you have done. I do remember when, uh, Commissioner Billings, the late Commissioner Billings, uh, was involved in this effort. Uh, he put a lot of time and energy, uh, and effort into it as well because it was the right thing to do. Uh, and, and I'm certainly gonna support the motion. Uh, what I, I talked to the city manager about it, he assured me, was that there would be no disrespect or defacement of the resting place of, of these individuals because of activity on the golf course. Is that correct? Is that, is where this is located, uh, separate and apart from the golf course itself?
Commissioner, I do believe that is correct.
Okay.
Uh, I think, I think the, um, as the city attorney indicated, that there's almost forty potential grave sites, but just over twenty with a high degree of certainty. Um, as I understand, their location, I think, is out of the play of the golf course. So I think that lends itself to a, a, a really good place to commemorate and memorialize, um, uh, the graves that are there. And I think there's a little more work to do. I don't wanna go too far. I don't, I'm going beyond the answer to your question, but, um, I, I think, I think we can do a really good job and I'm looking forward to, uh, to working with the, um, members of the golf club on that.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, one last thing, I, and I asked this question of the city manager and I'm sure they will consider this as they work through all of the, uh, details and logistics. Uh, but if, if we're gonna do this, we need to make opportunities for the public, uh, to visit the site if they so choose. And so, um, we don't have to get into the details now, Mr. City Manager, but I would hope that that would be included in the plan so that the public, uh, uh, will have access to the site and be able to, to visit, uh, as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Any further questions, comments on the, I got Dr. Bryant and Commissioner Matlow.
Yes. Yes, I wanted to say that, uh, I am in total support of the recommendation, the motion from, uh, Commissioner Williams Cox. I think that, uh, especially getting input from vested parties will yield a very positive result on the way to, uh, move forward. So, thank you, fellow commissioner, and, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Williams Cox, for, you know, bringing this item forward. Um, there's been a lot of community conversation about it. I, I think we're moving, um, in the right direction. Um, I'd be very fortunate if, if there are no graves under where people are, are playing golf already. Um, but recognizing that there may be more to be discovered. I, I think what we're looking for is when the community comes together, the country club comes together, find what's best for everybody and, and let's do the right thing, um, so we don't go down, you know, some of the other paths that may be more expensive and more, more challenging. And then, and I think we can come to that, um, agreement mutually, um, if, if we all work together towards that goal. So as this committee gets formed, I, I'm not familiar with the golf course and, and, and all the individual locations, but I'm sure the, the historians are more familiar than, than we are and can, and can help guide that conversation. Thank you.
Seeing no further comment, we have a motion on the table by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson for staff recommendation, option number one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, five zero. And Diane, again, thanks for bringing this to our attention. We appreciate it.
Thank you all for supporting him.
We are on item number thirteen point oh four, Mr. Manager and Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I will, um, introduce this and ask, um, Ms. Baldwin for further details. Uh, this item seeks your approval to negotiate a contract with Georgian Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated for the community engagement and design portion of the South City Transit Center. As you know, um, this is, this transit facility, um, or transportation hub, we've talked about it for the last year or two. We're very excited for it. It's planned for the northwest corner of Orange Avenue and Meridian Street. Uh, it will be the very first facility built to support public transit in our community since the C K Steel Plaza was opened in nineteen eighty-five. And I think it'll be, um, a great addition. We're looking forward to the design, uh, and ultimate construction with your approval. The next step is to work with George, um, and Associates on the community outreach to make sure that we get, um, uh, a great deal of public feedback and that it meets the needs of our community. Uh, Angela Baldwin is our director of Star Metro. Uh, she and her team are doing a great job. She has a few more details I would like her to share, uh, on the process and just a little bit of timing.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, appointed officials. I'd like to share my screen with you, um, for a brief presentation. So Star Metro is excited to present this update to you on the next steps, uh, for the South City Transit Center and recap our steps moving forward. To set the stage, I want to draw your attention to how the planning and building of the South City Transit Center supports the city's five-year strategic plan. Additionally, the proposed location of the South City Transit Center will increase accessibility to employment, education, and other services for southside residents and increase efficiency of the system with better route connectivity for the surrounding area. The facility will allow Star Metro to efficiently provide transportation options for the elderly, disabled, and low-income individuals and improve access to healthcare services in the area. As the manager stated earlier, as many of you know, the facility will be located at the corner of Orange Avenue and Meridian Street and will be the first new transit hub in Tallahassee since the C K Steel Plaza opened in nineteen eighty-five. Once a vacant lot, this parcel was repurposed into a temporary park by Blueprint last year. In fact, the development of the lot will be done in coordination with the larger Blueprint Orange Avenue Placemaking Project. Coordinating stormwater and other infrastructure needs, this facility will serve as an anchor site in the larger mobility and usability of the southside corridor. Since the South City Transit Center was added to the CRTPA Priority Project List in October two thousand eighteen, it's been moving steadily towards the point that we're in today. Already serving as a southbound stop off of Meridian and westbound stop off of Orange Avenue, there has been a lot of community enthusiasm and discussion about the possibilities of this corner, especially after the temporary park opened. As you can see, there have been several steps to secure funding for the design of this facility. And we're excited to tell you that Star Metro was awarded the FTA Helping Obtain Prosperity Grant, for everyone grant in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. This funding will go directly towards a study on how to optimize transit routes to provide more efficient transit services to the residents living in the surrounding areas. Also important to note, the HOPE grant, as well as the LAP funds being used for the consultant, require no local cash match from the city. The HOPE grant match is being met through F D O T toll revenue credits. A key component to any of Star Metro's initiatives are, is the community engagement. Just as with the successful implementation of last year's route changes, Star Metro is committed to seeking input from all stakeholders and interested parties on the routes to be served and customer amenities, as well as the overall look and feel of this anchor project. The recommended consultant will help coordinate public engagement and we look forward to working with them, as well as City of Tallahassee Neighborhood Affairs Department, who were critical in our route changes, change outreach last year. Given the COVID environment, we know there will be a need for more social media and virtual public engagement events than before. We also know there will be many creative opportunities for input and dialogue with all stakeholders and parties interested in creating an innovative, effective, and efficient transportation hub. In addition to the public engagement piece, the proposed consultant would coordinate the intricate process of design and permitting, including working with the F D O T on the required environmental impact study and with the city and county on stormwater analysis and mitigation. The level of expertise and coordination required for such a project is outside of Star Metro's scope and we're looking forward to working side by side with the professionals as we accomplish this strategic plan goal. As Star Metro continues to connect our community in new and exciting ways, we look forward to taking this new, next giant step for the South City Transit Center process. After approval to negotiate a contract and the contract is finalized, we expect community engagement to begin no later than the beginning of twenty twenty-one, with construction beginning in twenty twenty-two, and our team will continue to seek grant opportunities to fund the construction. I hope this gives you a good overview of where we are thus far, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Let's, uh, move into discussion. Uh, first of all, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, do you have any closing comments either? No, we're ready to move forward. Okay. So the, um, staff recommendations for option number one. Let's go ahead and open it up for discussion.
I'll move, uh, staff recommendation for option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson properly moved staff recommendation, seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanna say that, uh, again, you know, just yesterday, I did an interview with, uh, uh, Channel twenty-seven, uh, to announce the infrastructure improvements that we're making on Xyla Road. One of the things that, uh, I advocated for when I first came to the commission, my daughter was a student at Fairview. my daughter was a student at Fairview Middle School at the time, and I would take her to school. And what I recognized is that there was a deep ditch on the residential side of, uh, Xyla Road across from the school, but there were no protective railings to prevent a child or a adult walking on that sidewalk from falling into that ditch. And so we had the city to, uh, and I'll tell you where I'm going with this. We had the city to install railings along that sidewalk to protect, uh, our children and pedestrians. Well, yesterday we announced further steps that we're doing to improve the pedestrian experience along Xyla Road from Paul Russell to Tram Road. Uh, uh, we're putting a sidewalk now on the school side of Xyla Road. We're including, uh, crosswalks that will make it, uh, safer for, uh, those middle school students and parents that walk to the school to be able to cross Xyla Road. And so I say that to say this, I am excited about, and this is a three-point-four million dollar project. Uh, and I, uh, characterized it as another of our initiatives to invest, uh, in communities and neighborhoods on the south side of Tallahassee, many of which, uh, that have been neglected over the years. Uh, this is another project in that regard, along with the development of the Orange Avenue, uh, uh, apartments, uh, and other, uh, development that's going on along Orange Avenue, the VA Clinic, the Capital Regional Medical Center Emergency Room. Uh, we just, uh, uh, approved the ord, an introduction of ordinance for the English property, and that's property in that, uh, corridor that will be developed. So a, a lot is going to be happening, uh, and I'm excited about the kind of investment that we're starting to see, uh, in this South City, uh, neighborhood. I, I think this is going to be, again, I, I say that the apartments will be, the redevelopment revitalization of the apartments will be tran, uh, transformational, but certainly this facility will as well. It's another investment, uh, in, uh, the south side of Tallahassee and particularly, uh, the South City area. And I understand, uh, Ms. Baldwin, correct me if I'm wrong, that the blueprint, uh, portion of this will be a walking, uh, park across the street, uh, where the holding pond is now, another amenity, uh, for this area. And so I'm, I'm just proud of where we're going, uh, as a commission, where we're going as a city, uh, to improve the quality of life for citizens in this community, uh, wherever they live. Now, they, I had one question, Ms. Baldwin, and again, correct me if I'm wrong here. I remember when we were doing the sales tax committee, uh, and this issue, this project would come up. We talked about not only it being a transfer facility, but maybe having a commercial component on a second story? Was that something that was ever discussed by you all?
That was part of some preliminary discussions. Of course, we'll have to continue that, that conversation to, to finalize, um, where we're headed.
Okay. So i- in addition to a transportation hub, it could also, uh, provide commercial opportunities, jobs, business opportunities for the residents of this area. So I, I'm excited about it, uh, and, and, uh, Ms. Baldwin, thank you for the leadership that you have, uh, provided in bringing this, uh, to fruition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mr.? Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, well, I was just going to say, uh, uh, Commissioner Richardson, uh, ran off my paper. But we're, we're both very, very proud, and, uh, I, I, I am very proud because, you know, we both live on the south side. And, uh, we're very, very proud of, uh, the, uh, impact, the positive impact that's happening.
Yes.
The, you know, sidewalks, uh, I was over on Texas Street with you recently, Mayor, and, uh, sidewalks are going up over on Texas Street. You know, Polk, Polk Street, we got infrastructure and things going. We got, we had a lot of things going on to set us up for a great future. And so I just want to just toot, toot the horn of, of the city and, uh, let's, let Southside know that, uh, Southside pride still exists, and we're doing our best to deliver, uh, to all sides of town, but, uh, especially for those who have made, have been left behind in the past a little bit. So we're trying to catch up. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you, thank you, uh, Ms. Baldwin, for outstanding job with, uh, Star Metro. Because I think I heard you say that we don't have to come up with matching money? And anybody working in government, you know what that means? That you don't have to come up with matching money? That's a great thing.
Absolutely. Motion's been made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We are on item number thirteen point oh five, Mr. Manager and Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this is another, um, item for Star Metro, and I think a good sign of progress. And I certainly agree with all the comments on the prior item. And in fact, the no matching money, uh, um, Mayor Pro Tim is, is, um, certainly a very good thing. Uh, in this particular item, thirteen oh five, we're seeking your approval to, uh, negotiate a contract with Nelson Nygaard to perform Star Metro's comprehensive operational analysis and required transit development plan. Star Metro last performed a comprehensive operational analysis in two thousand and five, uh, so one is certainly needed at this time. Uh, with your approval, the vendor will also prepare Star Metro's required two thousand twenty-one transit development plan. That's a federally required plan that we do, uh, I believe every three years. Uh, and I want to bring, um, point of this item to your attention. Normally, we recommend, there is a scoring committee made up of staff. We recommend the highest-ranked vendor. In this case, staff has recommended the second-ranked vendor. It is the vendor with, uh, with the, the, by far the highest points as it relates to their experience, ability, and approach. However, the lowest-ranked vendor had a much lower price. In this case, vendors two through three, I'm sorry, two, three, and four in the ranking had a very similar price. Uh, in staff, um, uh, based on its experience and, and its understanding in this process, has recommended that you authorize, uh, contracting with the second-ranked vendor, and I certainly support that. Uh, Ms. Baldwin is also here to answer questions on this item, if you have any.
Thank you very much. All right, Commissioners, comments, discussion, direction?
Move staff recommendation option number one, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We're on item number thirteen point oh six, Mr. Manager and Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this item involves the procurement of asphalt materials that are used by our underground utility and, uh, Public Infrastructure Department. Um, as you know, the city maintains over six hundred miles of streets throughout our hundred-plus square miles of city's limits. And we do a number of repairs, um, in, in things that involve asphalt. We spend approximately half a million dollars a year on those products, and we competitively did, uh, these, these items. It is a very competitive, uh, selection process, uh, and the prices are tend, tend to be tightly, uh, bound. In this case, uh, the lowest, uh, price, uh, respondent was P V and Sun Construction Company, and we're seeking your approval to execute a two-year agreement, uh, for these asphalt materials. That is option one.
Recommended option is option number one by staff. Let's open it up for discussion, direction?
Move option one, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly made by Commissioner Richardson, is there a second to the motion? Seconded, seconded by Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimously five zero. Mr. Manager, do we have anything else to come before us before policy formation and direction?
No, sir. That concludes our business.
Do we have any other items to come before us besides unagended business speakers?
No, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, we are on unagended business speakers. Let me turn it back over to you. Let me, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, sir.
I, I need to excuse myself from the meeting temporarily. Issue to come up that I gotta take care of.
No worries.
And I will.
And if we don't see you, I understand. Uh, we, we are done with the business and, and the four of us will be here.
Okay. And I will listen to audio of any of the speakers that I might miss.
No worries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I hope all is well. Take care.
Okay. All right. Mr. Cook, I'm going to turn it over to you. Uh, I'd like to remind our unagended speakers, uh, that Mr. Cook will call your name and, uh, your name and address for the record, please. Mr. Cook, it is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have nine unagended speakers, uh, this evening. The first is Kat Keen, um, who I do see is on and, uh, is being unmuted. I will mention just before, uh, remarks are made that we did receive, uh, one page, what would be a handout if you were in person, that we distributed to you, um, at some point this afternoon. So with that, I will, uh, let you begin your comments. If you give your name and address, you may begin for three minutes.
Good afternoon, Kat Keen. I'm at twenty-four oh two Killarney Way. Good afternoon, everyone. As a longtime Tallahassee resident, I'm so proud to be living in the city at this time. My name is Kat Keen. I've, uh, called Tallahassee home for about twenty-five years, uh, serving in the nonprofit and state government sector. And today, I'm excited to talk to you about Sidewalk Talk. Sidewalk Talk is a community listening project where volunteer listeners gather together in public spaces to listen to anyone about anything. And Mayor Daly, Mayor Pro Tim Williams Cox, and Commissioners Matt Low, Richardson, and Bryant, thank you so much for your time today. Sidewalk Talk is, the mission is to teach and practice heart-centered listening in public spaces. Sidewalk Talk is a global movement of seven thousand volunteers in fourteen countries, almost entirely driven by volunteers. And I went through the process to be a chapter leader for Tallahassee Sidewalk Talk because I wanted to be a better listener. And I think, like, when I think about what it feels like to be listened to, to me, it's like the definition of love. And I want to bring this here to help so that everybody can be heard. Initially, I reached out to community leaders, some of whom responded and joined our first Zoom interest meeting. And we've had weekly Zoom meetings where folks can drop in and learn more. Um, and here's how this works. In cities, volunteer listeners meet in the same public space at the same time on a regular basis. For example, a city park, a downtown park, a market, a subway station, so that the community becomes familiar with the ongoing presence and that the listening spaces are public, so they're accessible. In Minnesota, it's pretty cold, so Sidewalk Talk listeners meet at the public library. And I want to share this with you as leaders because I believe there's a significant need for listening now in our community. When I watch our challenges with racial justice, with different perspectives, and with life circumstances really affected during this pandemic, what I think is that listening is always the first step. For citizens to know more about Sidewalk Talk, that's really my ask and the need, is simply awareness for more people to know about this so that they can, one, sign up to be a volunteer listener, and, two, be collaborators so that we can bring this listening here together. I've met with the CEOs of Elder Care Service, United Partners of Human Service, and Two One One Big Ben. And there's a lot of opportunity, listening online for isolated seniors, for human services frontline workers. And you could imagine colleges, universities, neighborhood associations, and more. Listening will happen online for now and hopefully be in the sidewalk when we're safe and when it, we have the option to do that. Uh, thank you so much for your time. My hope is that you'll be interested in learn more at sidewalktalk.org or email me at kathrynmarykeen@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Love the idea.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Delatory Hollinger. Um, after Mr. Hollinger, we'll hear from Stanley Sims. Mr. Hollinger, you may begin, and after your three minutes, we'll move to Mr. Sims.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Delatory Hollinger, uh, five oh one Ave Avenue. A couple of meetings ago, um, Commissioner Williams Cox introduced us to Robert and Trudy Perkins. And so I would like to, uh, take just a few mon, moments to, um, tell you a little bit about who they were. Um, Robert and Trudy Perkins were civil rights icons of the community. As a matter of fact, um, they were responsible for bringing about many changes from which we all benefit today. Uh, Mr. Perkins was one of the first civil rights leaders in the city of Tallahassee. Um, one of his first acts, um, there were no parks for African-Americans in the city of Tallahassee until nineteen fifty-four. So, um, and that was as a result of what Mr. Perkins did. And, uh, there were children in the Bond community who had no place to play. And Mr. Perkins, um, he and, uh, C.U. Smith were really the only African-Americans at the time who were coming to speak before the city commission in the early nineteen fifties. And so when he didn't see movement on his request, uh, he, uh, got two truckloads of kids from the Bond community and took them to a white park to play in. Within a matter of six months, uh, Jake Gaither, uh, pa, park for, uh, Jake Gaither Park for Negroes was constructed, um, in the, on, on the south side. And, uh, moving forward into, uh, the sixties, the Perkins operated the Perkins Service Station at the corner of Wanish Way and Osceola Street. Uh, they provided gas to members of, uh, the carpool, um, during the Tallahassee bus boycott. Um, perhaps the most significant was, uh, Mr. Perkins' quest starting in nineteen seventy-one. Um, and not as a member of an organization, um, not with a significant crowd behind him, but, um, on his own time, uh, traveling to Washington, D.C. to meet with United States Senators Burke Bay, Edward Gurney, and Ted Kennedy, uh, to talk about the discrimination that he saw taking place in city government at the time. And, um, they, uh, he did this on three occasions, traveling to D.C. to meet with members of the United States Senate and as well as, uh, the United States Attorney General at the time, William Saxby. And, uh, as a result of Mr. Perkins' work, the U.S. Attorney General filed a federal lawsuit against the city of Tallahassee, uh, stating that, uh, the city was, had engaged in a pattern and practice of racial discrimination as a result. Federal Judge, uh, William Arnau issued a consent decree, um, stating that city government would be integrated, uh, managerial to custodial positions, um, at twenty-three point seven percent ratio to the black population in Tallahassee. And so I think that was, uh, probably their most significant accomplishment. Also making sure that black and white nurses at T M H received pay, pay equity at a time they were not doing so. So that's just, uh, uh, a brief, brief, three minutes about Robert and Trudy Perkins. And thank you, Commissioner Williams Cox, for, um, bringing, bringing them up and, and, and for working to see them honored for their accomplishments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stanley Sims. Stanley Sims will be followed by Anthony Suarez, um, who may have had to leave the meeting, but we'll find that out in a moment. Uh, Mr. Sims, if you are unmuted, if you give your name and address, you can begin.
Um, Mr. Cook, before my time starts, may I ask a question of clarification, please?
Speak up just a little bit, and you can ask. I couldn't hear what your question is.
Before my time starts, can I ask you a question of clarification? The last time we had this Zoom meeting, I signed up for multiple themes, and I had to condense everything into three. So this time I only signed up for one item, and now you're allowing everyone to speak our multiple items. So I'm asking, if you all are going to keep changing the rules, could you not change them at the commis, commission meeting when it's already too late for us as citizens to adjust our entries? Is, this is very inconvenient.
Sims, your time has stood, is now going to begin. You have three minutes on unagended items, please. Go ahead.
Okay. Let me go ahead and spin my, it's, it's very clear that the mayor does not, is really concerned about hearing the voices of citizens that don't agree with him. I've made several calls to the mayor's office. I won't get an invitation to supper to the mayor's off, to the mayor's house like he does other chosen black leaders. But I'm a leader in this commuter who, you may feel that funny or hilarious, but I find that very frustrating that we have continuous high-crime area over in the Griffin Heights community. I've reached out to you and several members of your staff, and I'm being ignored. It is unfortunate that I always have to go down to the EEOC office or call Catherine just to get a message, not a response, a message. Another thing that I would like to talk about is I want to commend Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioner Curtis Richardson. and Commissioner Curtis Richardson for your continuous support and helping help Executive Director open up a crisis center in the Griffin Heights community with the collaboration of the bond. We've able to gain the partnership through the Sheriff Department, but we keep not, my hands are just sore from knocking on the doors of the Tallahassee Police Department and getting no response. I understand that there was a loss in Deputy City Manager's thing, but we have several staff, and I was ignored, Mayor, by all of them, just like you're ignoring my concern about the inconsistencies with the way you do public comment. It is very important. I don't know how to get in touch with you. You say you get thousands of calls, hundreds of calls. Well, you don't respond to any of mine. I'm able to reach Mayor Pro Tem Diane. I'm able to reach Curtis Richardson to address my concerns. They refer me to you, but I can't. I'm even able to reach out to your wife and talk about the Children's Citizens Council, which you two are quite pushing, which I don't understand how you could be so insensitive, not answer us with crying, but you are pushing agenda to put more tax on a people who are already standing in food lines, waiting for their next meal. But you will not talk with me, but you give the appearance that this commission, that city government is transparent and open to all of those who you agree with, as well as them that you don't. I cannot, I can't even, I don't wait for an invitation. I ask and can't get an answer to any of my requests. And it's so unfortunate because it's only this government, this government.
You have your three minutes.
Have a problem with.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anthony Suarez, and as I said, I don't believe I see his name any longer, but I'm giving it just a moment to make sure. Not hearing from him, John Evans, who also spoke earlier and asked to speak at this point of the meeting as well. I don't hear John Evans, nor do I see him on the call. I do see Mary Ann DeArcheangelis, who would be our next speaker, and she'd be followed by Max Epstein. So if Mary Ann DeArcheangelis wants to unmute the mic, she may begin her remarks, and I'll let you know when you're close to your three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Mary Ann DeArcheangelis. I live over behind Magnolia, near the Indian Head neighborhood. So, good evening, everyone. As several people discussed earlier, on September 5th, the Tally 19 protesters were arrested. They were doing so when protesting the unjust grand jury decision where the police officers who took down Michael Johnson, Wilbin Woodard, and Tony McDade walked free. They were also demanding community control of the Tallahassee police. That day, police, who outnumbered protesters 3 to 1, hurt and arrested 14 people during that day, arrested four more during that week, and still have a warrant out. These protesters are now known as the Tally 19. We, as the people elected you, city officials who work very hard on our behalf, and you are supposed to carry out what is in our best interest. Do not think that it's in anyone's best interest for the protest of police crimes to be met with this level of brutality. I find the timing of the curfew and also the statement from the Tallahassee police that they would begin, you know, ticketing protests, I found that timing very strange in conjunction with when we knew the verdict would come out. If someone speaks out against police brutality and asks for community control of the police, not for the police to be given more money or new types of training, but to have more control as a community, I don't think those people should be faced with the possibility of years in prisons and hefty fines. The Tallahassee Police and State Attorney Jack Campbell are taking inappropriate actions and repressing the Tallahassee 19 for speaking out. I urge you, as our city commissioners, to join us in demanding that State Attorney Jack Campbell immediately drop all charges against the Tally 19 and also drop the issued warrant. I will cede the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Max Epstein, be followed by Chelsea Reimer.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent, thank you. This is Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Court. I want to talk a little bit about stormwater today. We had a great meeting between Blueprint, city and county staff to move forward. Our group would like to create, our citizen group, a comprehensive plan that involves all three agents and master stormwater plan. And I urge you, for the Walani adoption first, to do an archaeological survey and natural features inventory to see what's there, protect those slave graves and any other archaeological items, and to create and require a stormwater master plan. Because just like Sam Uway, if you don't follow the federal standards and you don't have a plan, it's going to make you very difficult to get tens of millions of dollars in grants going forward. It's extremely important. Not letting the developer, the first one, come up with it doesn't make sense. And you're going to continue to retrofit, which is what all of, basically, the city ponds already are. We're fixing historical wrongs. I did receive a notice of intent last Friday. The city of Tallahassee has already applied for a permit, and DEP is going to be issuing this permit in about two weeks for a master stormwater concept design for the central drainage ditch. But it includes two projects that were not ever noticed to the public, and there's been no public comment, and I find that a little disturbing, to say the least. One is untreated runoff into Lake Alberta from developed lands. I think you should probably talk to the Apalachia Audubon about that. And the second one is a planned pond across the street in the Alberta neighborhood. And if you live on Pepper Drive, Alberta Drive, or Hernando Drive, all the way over to Linton Street, just know that you are in the crosshairs of potentially being underwater in the next five to 10 years. And the last time I saw a blob like this, it was over the Boynton Still neighborhood as a study area. This one's purple, the other one was yellow. So I would request that this stormwater plan be looked at first and talk about equitable development. We need some way to figure out that these big infrastructure projects benefit the community that they're going into or those that they affect. Look at FSU, there's a perfect spot, I think, for this pond to go. We need to look there. And if you look at all of these ponds that we've already done, they were all, they're all in historically black neighborhoods. You know, Carter Howl Strong Park, Anita Favors Plaza, Villa Mitchell, and then you had, I mean, just go on. If you look at the master plan. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and we need discussion on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Chelsea Reimer, followed by John Reimer. And Mayor, those are the last two unattended speakers we have. Chelsea Reimer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, great. I would like to echo all of the previous speaker's sentiments as all of those issues are very important. There doesn't seem to be a lot of consistency with these meetings in regards to public comment, your policy, or Florida statutes. Not only is this creating unnecessary barriers for able-bodied people, but the disabled community as well, as there are many that cannot respond in time and with the constant changing at the last minute, usually when people sign up onto phone calls, and suppression of public voices is not acceptable to anyone. There seems to be a push to hide things from the public with secret meetings and with suppression of public voice. And with this being a Florida statute, I would remind the commissioners that they need to take public comment and that this is important for all of us. And to, in regards to the police suppression, that, you know, we're seeing this just history repeating itself, and in 2020, this should not be happening. The same thing was done to the suffragettes, the same thing was done to Martin Luther King Jr. and everything else. And it's very dismaying that the city is not taking a stance against legislations by our governor, things that are currently going on within our city, and our ordinances need to be looked at and scrutinized more heavily. I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. John Reimer.
Hello again, can you hear me?
We can. You are ready to begin.
All right, thank you very much. I just want to kind of touch back on the 13.04 now that I've had a chance to kind of hear a little bit more about it. I'm happy to see you all moving forward with additional public transit. Commissioner Richardson stated that this is a $3.4 million project. It sounds like a lot of money, but when you think about it in terms of how much money TPD has approved for the next fiscal year budget, about $60 million, I'm certain we can do better. There's absolutely no reason why the city can't be the leader in the state of Florida in terms of public transit. Not only will expanding public transit create more jobs immediately, but with more reliable, frequent, and dependable routes throughout the city of Tallahassee, more or less fortunate citizens will be able to get jobs they wouldn't normally have access to. I urge you all to push the envelope, and rather than expanding roads for more cars, move towards thinking, or move towards taking more vehicles off the road, utilizing public infrastructure. I also want to make it a point to look into how this new system can be more handicap accessible. I urge you to push for widening bicycle lanes throughout the city and providing curbs for protection to those bicyclists. Tallahassee is a small city full of a thriving cycling community. And, but as someone who has been hit by two vehicles in the city of Tallahassee while riding a bicycle as a result of poor visibility or distracted drivers, I think making environmentally friendly forms of transportation safer for our citizens is imperative. The more vehicles we can take off the road and replace with public transit, the safer we all will be and the less congested our roads will be. I also want to bring awareness to the fact that these virtual meetings may very well be coming to an end very soon. And I would like to request that you all heavily consider continuing to provide a virtual meeting option after COVID-19 restrictions are lifted because the disabled community of Tallahassee and those who are simply unable to meet in person due to scheduling conflicts deserve to have their voices heard in these meetings moving forward. And I sincerely hope that you provide that opportunity for them in the future because being one of those people that works, you know, just like most of us do, it's very difficult to make these meetings at 3 o'clock. I can imagine, you know, most people probably can't make the in-person meeting. So I yield the rest of my time. I appreciate you all, and I hope that you move forward with making Tallahassee a better place to live for everyone, not just the rich. Thank you.
Thank you. Back and complete unagenda business speakers, we are now on city commission information sharing of ideas. Mayor Pro Tem, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me, I have just about three or four things. I was asked to ask about the 440 development, and I know we received something, Mr. City Manager, we received something just prior to this meeting. Can you give a, you or whoever you designate, give a kind of a quick summary of what's going on with the 440 development?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I see Assistant City Manager Tetter turned on his screen. I think he can do it the best. Really, the most significant timing is that it, staff expects to issue the site plan approval this week. There was one condition in particular that has been of a great deal of focus. It is the preservation of a large live oak tree at Virginia in Monroe. Anybody that's been around that area probably will concede in their mind's eye. And so there's been a great deal of effort into making sure that the development will not impact that tree. And I feel good about that. We've had our city urban forester involved, and the ATN or the Alliance for Tallahassee Neighborhoods has been engaged in with the development staff. Well, let me, let me ask Mr. Tetter to kind of highlight the steps in the process in what we see moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So what we have accomplished at this point, the DRC made conditions of approval, subject to those conditions being satisfied. I think we all know ATN submitted a series of questions regarding the site plan. They asked to meet with staff. Typically, the process is the applicant will resubmit the site plan to address those conditions, and the growth management is pretty much scheduled to say within seven days, they will issue comments on that resubmit. In this particular case, the applicant worked with staff, and they worked with ATN to say, "Look, we are willing to have a meeting with you, a public meeting," which they invited, allowed anyone to participate, to basically provide any comments, go over the site plan. And I think really the topics of conditions really were focused on the tree for the most part. There were some multimodal transportation development standards that was considered regarding the sidewalk on Monroe Street, the trees on Monroe Street. And so now the applicant, they said they would submit the plans. Karen's shop, the growth management shop, has typically seven days to respond, which that will be Friday. And if those conditions have been satisfied, then Karen's shop will be approving that site plan. That's what's happened. It's taken a little longer based on allowing ATN to have some additional input on this process. But I think it's worked very well to make sure that everyone is aware of those issues and how staff is intending to address those issues.
So the tree will be, will not be removed? There's no technical removal of the tree and none of that kind of stuff, is there?
No, ma'am. So the, and I think a lot of people are getting confused when we're talking about a technical removal is when development is within a certain part of the critical protection zone. Development already, right now, is within the critical protection zone. So technically, it's been removed for a long period of time. I would say at least half of the roots of the zone don't even extend where the canopy is because there's a retaining wall on the backside. And our urban forester, she's, you know, been paying strong attention to this, making sure that where the roots are, the root zones will be.
Mr. Tetter, Mr. Tetter. Someone is sharing their screen, who is not staff. So, IT, can we fix that? Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's quite okay. So essentially, the root zone is very, in a very limited area because it has been impacted over time with, it's kind of grown into an area where there's a retaining wall. So anything underneath that canopy zone, that is within that, where that retaining wall was located, there are no roots there. And so that's a misconception is that any development on the north side of that tree, where on the north side of that retaining wall, that there will be impacts. Again, I'm not the urban forester. I trust the urban forester's decisions and recommendations on how to deal with these issues. It is my understanding that she required an arborist, a certified arborist, to submit a report to make sure that all of her concerns would be addressed. And it's my understanding that she is at that point where it will be approved based on the criteria she was looking for to ensure the longstanding of that tree will be included. And I think it's really important, one of the most important things when we're talking about construction in and around that area, she is requiring a certified arborist to be on-site during the construction activities to even further provide protection of that tree when any development will occur in and around that area.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor, the second item I wanted to mention is that, you all recall at the last meeting, I had to leave a little early because I had agreed to convene a meeting of the protesters and law enforcement. And I've not talked much about that, about that meeting, but let me just, since there have been so many comments about it tonight, let me just go ahead and offer some results from that meeting. As a result of that meeting, the state attorney was there, and the state attorney made an offer to drop charges, to drop some charges for, I think it ended up being about 17 people. to drop some charges for, I think it ended up being about 17 people. There were some, some things that would need to be done, such as participation in a diversion program. And as of yesterday, the state attorney has made a suggestion to some of the local attorneys and some, some other folks on how to handle that diversion piece. And it was to possibly attend the upcoming Race Relations Summit that is being put on by the city free of charge that will be a virtual conference. And so the request that charges be dropped, I think that we need to recognize that the state attorney is entertaining that, in fact, offered to do that in some cases, in the cases where he could. And I'm going to just say that this is unheard of in Leon County. In the past, the state attorney never, to my knowledge, never dropped any charges or never offered to drop any charges. So that has been offered. There are some, some things that need to be worked out to get that done. But I'm hoping that those who are intending to move on with their life and have a positive life and not have to disclose any, any charges or arrests will take that offer up if that, if that works for them. But that was one of the things that came out of the meeting that we had with, between the protesters and law enforcement. Chief Rebel was there, along with all his deputy chiefs, and the city, city leadership was there as well. So everybody was there. This is what came out of it. And I'm hoping that as a result of that, and as a result of what the state attorney is offering, that we will be able to not keep looking back, but to look forward and move forward together. I also posted for everyone's consumption, the form that is used for special events. And that form, that, that form and that policy was, was last revised in 2013. And I've used it when I've had special events and I've had to get a permit from the city to, to do certain things. And I've also had to buy insurance. One-day event insurance is very inexpensive, and it is, you know, for a million dollars. It is very, very inexpensive. This is not a new requirement. This was a requirement that was already in place. As I said, I too had to use it when, when I had to do something that was off of the, off of the beaten path. So I'm just, just trying to provide information so that we understand that these, these are not special circumstances that were created just to, you know, to get in, to try to stop someone from expressing themselves. I've been involved in protests, and if I see fit, I'll be involved in protests in the future. But there are some things that I'm just not going to do while protesting, and I'm going to follow the law because I don't want to even be considered someone to be arrested. Orange is not my color, unless it's with green, orange and green. And the final thing is, we, we talked a little bit in the past about, in the comp plan, southern strategies. And Commissioner Richardson brought it to our attention that we might want to call that something else because of what southern strategies actually has meant in the south. And I wanted to offer, I don't know if he's offering any suggestion, but I wanted to offer a suggestion for changing that to perhaps southern progression, because we're making progress in this, in this southern tip, and we're going to make even more progress. And I, I want to ask that at a future meeting that we bring the update. You heard some of the update that Commissioner Richardson mentioned, you heard some of the update that I mentioned. We know this because we live here, live down here. But if we could get at a, at a future meeting, up-to-date information on where we are and a lot of the things that are happening on, on the, this, this southern region of our, our city to, to continue to move forward. One of the things that we talked about was having economic development in the south side. And we're, we're staging right now to make sure that we can have that economic development. We're getting infrastructure and transit and other things in place so that we can do that. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention in those items. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioner Bryant?
I needed to unmute, but I only have one comment, and that is to actually commend staff on their outreach for community input. I think on every project, we have just gone the extra mile to ensure that we receive comment and then act upon it. So my, my comment today is just commendations to, to all of our leaders who actually initiate and then staff who actually causes things to come into fruition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matla?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just two items. One, Mr. Cook, and at our next meeting, we're going to be transitioning back to in-person meetings. And there was lots of comments earlier about public comment and how that will be taken. Could you just give a brief explanation of how we'll take public comment, how chambers will operate, you know, what capacity will be and that sort of thing?
I will give you as much as information as I can. That is something that we have looked at over time during the summer as the governor's executive order changed or was extended. But our expectation is that we would have our meeting in, in chambers. Public input would operate as it did prior to our moving to a virtual meeting session. So we will, and this was the, this commission's direction a couple of years ago when, when you came on board to provide an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda items at the time each item comes up. Or if they're not able to stay for the entire meeting and would like to speak at the front end, they may speak on agenda items at the, at an early point in the meeting, so before those individual items are taken up. And then should citizens also want to speak on, or instead of agenda items, want to speak on something that's not on the agenda, we'll take those speakers at the very end of the meeting. So I can't recall whether the 28th has public hearings. I think it does. Yes, it does. And so on the 28th, we would have public hearings. We would hear from citizens individually on those public hearing items that are publicly noticed. And then those unadmitted comments would come at the end after all of the public hearings. Again, three minutes per, per item, unless an individual is speaking at the beginning of the meeting, in which case they'd have three minutes to talk about whatever they've, they want to cover. In terms of capacity, we'll be working with our facilities folks from the city manager's office to identify that. Our plan will be to have seating for the public that is distanced. You have the recommended six feet. That'll be a matter of geometry. How many seats can you accommodate in the space we have and maintain those distances? Just for, as you probably are well aware, but for the, for the public to know, during this time, there has been addition of some plexiglass at the dais for the commissioners and also for a couple of the places where our staff may normally be seated a little closer together. Those, a couple of those areas provide some plexiglass dividers so that we'll have a place for, for staff to, to sit. So if citizens look and see a little bit of a different look, that's what that is, is providing those additional protections. We will continue, I would expect, and these are discussions that we'll continue to have, but probably continue to take written, written comment as we, as we make that transition. This will be our first meeting back in person, obviously, so still working through some, some details. We will be prepared, again, this is from, with the facilities staff, making sure that we provide some additional seating in the area of the mezzanine. Depending on the nature of a meeting, the accommodation in chambers may handle the public. But if we need additional space, we provide additional seating on the mezzanine. The mezzanine area does have sound and audio that broadcasts the commission meeting so that if, for instance, someone wished to speak and was seated in the mezzanine, they would be able to hear all of the proceedings of the meeting and then also be able to hear their name, name when called. We'll probably have to pay a little bit of attention to make sure that we give those folks time to enter and exit. Some of the rest of it, we will probably learn as we go. I hope I've talked enough, but if I haven't, I'll make up something else.
That's very helpful. I, I know it's been a challenge. We, we keep adapting from meeting to meeting. So I just wanted to give people a heads up of what that transition may look like. And, you know, we'll, we'll get through the transition and hopefully it all goes well. The, the second issue I, I wanted to bring up, and I'm not going to, actually just came to my attention yesterday, but there's an interest in Railroad Square to look at all the roads in the square. So currently, there's Industrial Drive and Commercial Drive and one other street. And they've been working with, through the county's address committee to, to look at renaming their, the entire square to use the Suffolk Square and just have it be Railroad Square. And when the new hotel comes online, let that kind of be the focal point with an address of 1R Road Square and then going, going back. So they, they've been working with the county, and it took them a while to realize that these are city streets, and they needed to come talk to the city. So I'll be directing them to, to our staff this week. If you haven't received it yet, Mr. City Manager, they may be contacting you to, to look at the feasibility of doing that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have one item, and I want to thank the city attorney for providing me with the legal language to read into the record. Our plan for the October 28th city commission meeting is to hold the meeting in person. I'd like to read into the record the following and then entertain a motion. On March 20th, 2020, the governor issued executive order 20-69 authorizing local governments, due to the COVID-19 state of emergency, to hold public meetings using communications media technology and without the physical presence of a quorum. This order has been periodically extended with the latest extension until November 1st, 2020 by the governor's executive order 20-246. On April 8th, 2020, the city commission approved the holding of city commission meetings in all other city of Tallahassee public meetings, including meetings of quasi-judicial boards and advisory committees using communications media technology until the expiration of executive order 20-69. Therefore, I request a motion for the city commission to resume in-person public meetings with a physical presence quorum of this body and all city of Tallahassee public bodies, including quasi-judicial boards and citizen advisory committees, councils, and boards. Madam Attorney, did we cover it all? Excellent. Is there a motion on the table to that effect?
No move.
Second.
Probably moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes 4-0 with Commissioner Richardson out of chambers. Mr. Cook, you had a comment.
You may have stated it in those remarks, but do those, that, that effective date is October 28th?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely. With that, it is 5:23. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon and evening, ladies and gentlemen. We stand adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.